Okay, let's go ahead and call a meeting to order. It's Tuesday, October 17th, 2017. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes of reports received and filed?
September 2017, collectible fees filed.
Commissioner, committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Cambridge and outreach meetings tomorrow morning. Probably won't make that. Cassel office is going to be open tomorrow. Christmas committee meeting Thursday morning, can't make it. Trans connections Thursday afternoon, won't make it. About all I got until next week. The salary commission meeting Tuesday before our regular meeting.
Debbie, you gonna make it to that loggers meeting on Thursday, or?
I'm gonna try.
Okay.
School meeting. I think it's that name.
Yep, no, I don't really have anything. It's a good thing.
That's because you're gonna be gone. He's leaving Thursday, go out and play with the Navy. Come back with a tattoo of an anchor on his arm.
I'm a forehead.
I have Cambridge and board meeting tonight. I will go to the outreach meeting tomorrow. I'm gonna try to come over for Senator McCaskill's listening post Thursday. I've got a meeting with FOA Friday, I've got a meeting with Lincoln. Saturday, Little Theater's doing a little shop of horrors. Well, that's actually on Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Sunday, Historic City of Jefferson's having an open house. And then there's a Cole County Extension Dinner. Monday is a juvenile court advisory board meeting. I don't know if I'll make that or not, but... That's all I got. Bids and contracts, approval of real estate contract.
You doing that right now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. This is...
That was...
Okay, this is for the lot.
Okay.
You all need to vote to approve the contract and sign it.
I don't see any email, it just explains what it is. Uh, this is the Lot below, uh...
Baptist building.
Yeah, the Missouri Baptist Building. That empty lot that's on the corner of Adams and, uh...
The gravel lot?
Yeah, the gravel lot. So, uh, we were approached by the Baptist Convention about purchasing it. And, uh, we can use it for a parking lot right now. Future expansion, 20 years from now, we can, we can build something on it, so, um, we're going ahead and purchase the net.
I move that we approve and sign the real estate agreement.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay. Uh... Next.
Two, one for them and one for us.
Okay.
Two original.
Accounts payable review.
Accounts payable review.
I need some approval of accounts payable. There's a few utility bills out there and one credit form.
I move that we approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sign approval at County Park.
Yeah, so this was a cross-country group that had put up the statues, um, out there, and they just wanted to put up a sign that kind of described, um, what some of the statues meant. And, um, so they were wanting to put that up over, um, on the west side of the park there, in that little picnic area. So, we're just looking for approval, um, to do that. Everything's at their cost. And I know you'd sent me something on agreement as far as liability and stuff.
That's the one we signed when they put up the statues.
Okay.
Do you want to do another one for the sign, or do you say...
Um, probably should.
Okay.
So, anyway, just something simple.
Basically, I'll get a hold of...
Okay, I can give you her, her contact.
Right. And then I'll just basically probably plug it into what we did before.
That's fine. You guys okay with that?
I am, yes.
I move that we approve the installation of a sign at County Park.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approval of the investment policies.
Okay. Um, we talked about this, and the committee has several times, and I think we have the final version that should be attached, or that was the email that I sent to you guys the last time. I do have copies, if you want copies of it. Or if you have any questions, how many members are here? Jill's looked it over. Christian was on the committee. Sam was, and so was Eric. Eric, do you have any comments or anything?
No, I think it's a good representation of where we ought to head. And, uh, I don't know if we mentioned last time, but we, you know, had started off with the state treasurer's draft investment policy they have on their website. It's something the state law requires a state treasurer to provide political subdivisions. And at some point, Boone County, who also is a non-charter first-class county, appeared to really have the language perfected. So, we pivoted and used, um...
And, and we ended up using, uh, their model, well, their existing investment policy. And so I think it turned out, uh, we fine-tuned it for Cole County's own nuances. And so I think it turned out to be where we, where we all want to be. And the timing is good, because the Federal Reserve has announced they're going to have another interest rate increase in December. I noticed a three-month treasury just in the last four, five, or six business days has started to tick up again. So, the market is starting to bake in that increase into the various treasury notes and bills. Thanks.
Thanks.
Yeah, I looked over it too, I think. I think it's right on.
I will still have to come back to you guys to talk about, you know, how much you want to invest in anything different that, outside the depository contract, but it would still have to be with the same financial institution, which right now is Central.
Yes. And we'll kind of tier them too, so that, um, you know, you don't have money tied down just in case. You know, we've got plans for using some of it next year and the year after and things like that, so...
The idea is to put it into a, what you call a ladder portfolio, where you use a third that goes out maybe a year, another third that would go out two years, another third that would go out three years. So, you'd have different maturities, which would be advantageous if the interest rates go up or down. You can decide whether to reinvest, uh, or simply let it mature and wait out the market. So, it gives you the kind of flexibility you want. You have to go out, you know, more than a year in order really to capture attractive yield. And since they're going to be U.S. securities, treasuries, treasury securities, um, which are backed by the full faith and credit of the United States government, it's at almost zero risk to account is something that with the interest rates ticking up, we needed advantage of.
I think there was some discussion when we were coming up with the policies as far as going outside of the depository agreement to look at vendors to, you know, for a portfolio. But I think Jill has discovered that it has to stay within the depository agreement, so that's why the one institution is listed here, so... And that's currently who we have the depository contract with, so...
Good, Jeff.
Mm-hmm.
Signature on this, or?
Well, if you just approve it, I vote, and then I will say that it was adopted on this day for the final copy that goes to the county clerk.
Okay. And then just being in the record will be sufficient.
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we adopt the Cole County investment policy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approval of overtime and compensatory time to the personnel manual.
Okay. Well, I did miss a day that you guys talked to the sheriff about potential contract with Russellville as far as the overtime is concerned. That needed to be noted in the personnel manual. So, we also, I don't know if you guys remember talking about the traffic grant?
Yes.
What's attached?
It should be what's attached.
I don't think...
It's, it's what's in green. Change.
So, just what's in green, or the strike-throughs is what's being removed?
No, the strike-throughs were taken out a long time ago, so...
Okay.
I tried to put the date behind them of when they were revised, so...
Okay.
And sometimes they revise and revise, so... And I did add the extra part about public works. Sometimes they, they switch in the summertime to 10-hour days. And I think that was never in there, so we needed to note that in there, that they switch their day to a 10-hour day in the summer hours.
So, then overtime accrues after 40 hours?
For room bridge?
Yeah.
No, it's after an eight, eight-hour day. Or a 10-hour day.
What now?
It just says in here, actual hours in excess of 10 hours per day.
Above that talks about, that's just for the summer hours.
Okay.
Above that talks about the eight hours. Public works compensated based on actual workday excess of eight. And then the green part right below that.
I didn't know he's changing anything for public works on there.
We're not. I mean, I just wanted to clarify...
He said the stuff in green is changing.
I wanted to clarify that during the summer, when they work 10-hour days, that they don't get overtime for that extra two hours.
Not that they're based on a week, anyway?
No, there's, it never been based on a week. Because of snow removal and everything else is what I was told when I first got here.
Well, does that have to do with the week? Do you work over 40 hours a week?
Well, they could work three days, plow with snow for 15, 20 hours, and then they need to take Friday off. Well, if they took Friday off, then they wouldn't get that overtime that they worked those three days for.
Just saying they only get overtime for anything in excess of the 10 hours, though?
During the summer, excess of 10 hours per day is their overtime starts counting. During the regular year, it's eight hours.
They're basically declaring a 10-hour workday.
Yes, for summer hours. I just wanted to be clear on that. It was never very clear. I know they've been probably doing summer hours for quite a while. But then the other part down below that is the new part for the sheriff's department, for the exempt employees only, working hours funded by a grant or a special contract provided for overtime will be eligible for the overtime for pre-approved hours. So, basically, they don't have to work the 40 hours either to enjoy the premium time So, they could also take off a day, but as long as they're working under those pre-approved, under a special contract or under a grant. And the grant was that traffic grant, if you remember.
Well, a special contract's kind of like what Russellville's looking at.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
But I think John is, is limiting that to actual overtime.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, if employees don't sign up for overtime, there's no one that's staffing.
Yeah.
So, they, these will be employees working in excess of 40 hours.
Yeah.
Sheriff's actually on an 80-hour, two-week pay period. I mean, but they could take off a day too, and then they wouldn't be eligible for the overtime part of it. So, that's why it has to be in here specified, that those hours that they work on that project will be at overtime rate, no matter if they physically work their 80 in two weeks or not.
I'm just wondering if we shouldn't take out, uh, the summer portion of the public works. And so, and then it would just say employees working a 10-hour day schedule will accumulate overtime after working actual hours in excess of 10.
They're the only department that works that way. Every other department is either an 80-hour...
Forty.
Or a 40.
So, I need clar, I need to put the eight and the 10, just so during the regular year, that they don't then have to work two extra hours every day to get to their overtime rate. What's your one...
Well, I mean, I just, from where, from how I'm looking at it, it's just, you know, whether they, what if they're doing it in the fall, or what if they're doing it in the spring, or what if they're on a job and they're, you know, they're working four 10s and maybe it's in the middle of winter? I don't know. I mean, but, um...
Well, they currently don't, and they'd have to come to you guys to change, I would think, to change their work schedule. The only time they ever do 10s is during the summer hours, so...
So, there's no instances in the winter where they'd be working 10-hour days?
Not the others.
Four 10s?
Only if there's, you know, they were going overtime, because it would be a snow thing or something like that.
Yeah.
And they do staff their building even during the summer. There's some people that stay on eight hours a day. There's, there's quite a few of them that go to the 10 hours and four days. So, they're never closed. I want to make that, or they're never closed, but they are...
This policy is to basically take care of the winter time for room, for snow removal, right?
Well, technically, I...
So, how would it affect or affect the summer schedule?
Yeah, it's always been the eight hours, anything over. But in the last few years, we've done the summer. It's just not been clear in here.
But we've never gotten in snow in summer, but I believe...
No, but they went to 10-hour days.
But we haven't gotten snow in our 10-hour days.
No. But the eight hours to 10 hours would technically be overtime, the way this, the way the old policy was written. Those two extra hours would be overtime. So, I'm just trying to clean that up.
I wish you would've told us before. Today's the, the, this is all here.
Well, I sent it to you.
Yeah, I know, you know, something that didn't, didn't affect the public works part of it. You said, no, this was just the sheriff's part, which it doesn't really affect them, but you do have part of it in there.
Well, it doesn't really affect them, it just clarifies.
Yeah, I got you.
But they're working four 10-hour days in a week?
Yes, in the summertime.
Yeah, so it's...
For Memorial to Labor Day, they, they always...
So, I guess where I was going, if they declare that they're working 10s, doesn't matter what time of year it is. I mean, you're saying it happens right now, but if they declare they're working 10s and it's four 10-hour days regardless of the time. I mean, I mean, I realize that they may be only doing it in the summer, but, I mean, they could do it, they could do it year-round if they wanted.
Well, then I would have to question them when it comes to time sheets.
Right.
Because that's not how this reads, so, um, if you want to change it to, I mean, that, I think you'd need Larry and Larry to talk about that, because that would be a substantial change, going from the eight to 10 all year round.
I'm not saying they're going to do it. I'm just saying, you know, as, as a policy, you know, um, if they declare four 10s is the work week, it'd be no different on a prevailing wage job or whatever. If you declare four 10s, it's overtime after 10 hours, so, um, so...
The only time you would need to question it is if they send a time sheet in that had over X amount of hours, and they had overtime hours in there. So, if they send it in with the 10 hours, say they want, for whatever reason, are doing the 10-hour schedule in the fall, and they don't send in overtime, then that's their scheduled time, right?
Well, I would question that, because they're different than everybody else, because they're on a...
We're all different.
Their overtime is based on an eight-hour day currently. And the rest of us are 40 in a week, or 80 in two weeks, or...
But if they don't send any overtime to be paid, why would you have to question them?
Because, probably not, I wouldn't, I mean...
Are you saying Chris?
If they had any overtime, but they do sometimes have overtime.
Just take out the summer schedule and just say employees working a 10-hour day will accumulate overtime after working act. Is that what you're saying, or?
Debbie's gonna throw something at me here in a minute.
Because you're giving them two hours, or you're taking away two hours now of overtime all year long? If you go, if you change it to a 10?
No, you're saying a schedule. If it's not scheduled for a 10-hour day, then they still get their overtime. If they're scheduled for an eight-hour day, then they get their two hours overtime.
We can change the language to, yeah, if you're scheduled for a 10-hour day. But they better post that change, they better do all, whatever you got to do to change somebody's schedule.
How do they post it? When they change it in the summer?
They know from Memorial to Labor Day, every year, the employees have an option to go to the 10-hour days for 10...
How do you know which ones took the option?
I can tell by their time sheets.
Well, you'll be able to tell by their time sheets anytime. They work a 10-hour day and they get two hours of overtime, that means that they didn't have a scheduled 10-hour day, right?
Well, it's pretty obvious if it's 8-8-8 or 10-10-10. I mean, I'll be able to tell.
That or a goal, but it...
Okay. So...
I'm, I'm just saying, and so, I mean, I'm not trying to argue or make this difficult, but...
Not yet.
Anyway, obviously, working four 10s is more efficient. You, you don't have downtime every morning, it, you know, you have less travel time to and from the job. It, it, it's a more efficient way to work. But you're saying between Memorial Day and Labor Day, well, there's, those are the worst three months to be working 10s, because it's usually hotter and everything else. I mean, your prime months are going to be March, April, May, September, October, November. I mean, you got great weather. I mean, yeah, the days are shorter, but I just don't understand why they're, why they're only doing it for that short window, but...
Yeah, we'd have to ask Larry and Larry. I don't know, it's just been traditionally, that's what they've done. And I don't know if it's because they work with a lot of contractors, and the contractors work longer hours during the summer, so they try to accommodate that and to alleviate kind of overtime technically, if they can get on the four 10s and they can stay with those contractors, because that's what most contractors work, I think.
You want to table this, and we'll just talk to Larry and Larry.
I don't think it affects them. I just, just let Debbie know what to do, that it's in policy, understand what you want to do with it. So, that's in there. I forget, Chris, if you've got a scheduled 10-hour day, whether it's fall, winter, or whatever.
10-hour week. Scheduled 10-hour week, correct?
Four-day, 10 hours.
Right.
So, you're saying delete the summer schedule and just say employees working a 10-hour day will accumulate overtime after working actual hours in excess of 10 hours per day, right?
We need to make it a scheduled 10-hour...
I don't know if it says scheduled, but somebody's going to have to make clear to him, because if you come back and...
It does, enjoy working a 10-hour schedule. Will accumulate overtime after working actual hours in excess of 10 hours per day. So, I think taking that out won't change what you were trying to accomplish. And they can have that during the summer as well. Maybe if they have a storm and they're out there in the middle of the night, uh, you know, getting debris or moving logs and stuff out of the road. And then say they're off Thursday for family issues or whatever, then they still get their overtime for what they worked over 10 hours that day. That's what you're saying, right?
Depends if they were scheduled for it, if they were on a normal eight-hour, then it's...
They weren't scheduled for it. You said they were on a 10-hour day, they went home, we had a storm, they'd come back in for a couple hours, they're going to get overtime, whether they're working that Thursday or not.
Right.
Because this is here to apply to them, saying they're still getting their overtime, whether they actually physically worked Thursday or not. They're just on Thursday, or it could be Wednesday, or... That's what you're trying to do, right?
Yep.
So, basically, you could just remove the word summer. And then, you know, Larry and them, they can still kind of make the schedule up. And if traditionally you work the 10-hour days in the summer, then that's fine, because that's how they're going to schedule them.
We'll just call it scheduled then, instead of, I mean...
I mean, are you good with that?
I hope they don't change their schedule every other week to accommodate that.
Well, obviously, yeah. If that, if that becomes a problem, then, yeah, we'll, I'll, we'll call them and tell them that we're not doing that. I mean, they're not going to change the schedule every week. It's going to have to be, you're on 10s or you're on eights.
Right.
That's just only, that's where I was coming.
Okay.
You could just delete the word summer.
So, we'll strike the word summer.
Because there could be instances where, and if it's abused, then we...
Well, I can get rid of the whole top paragraph too, then about the eight hours then, whatever their schedule is.
There you go.
I, I, I don't, I just think they'll just be messing with the schedule, but that's up to you guys.
I'll talk to Larry about it.
Okay.
Well, they're not the only ones that can do it. Everybody can do that, but it's not scheduled.
Well, but they're the only ones on a per-day basis for comp time. The health department, they have people working 10s, they have people working eights. It's not an issue for them, because they are on a 40-hour week, so...
I move that we approve the changes to the policy with the striking of the word summer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Let's see, if, and if we create, if we've created a monster, we'll, we'll readdress it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Discussion of health insurance renewal for 2018.
Okay. Well, you know, Joe was here last week. We did, you guys did decide to move the ancillary products to sunlight, and they're the ones that will be handling the dental vision. And so then there was some questions about the health insurance. As far as when Joe and them were here, they say the actuaries say we should be charging around the $650.42 per employee for the healthcare. We haven't increased ours in the last two years. We're self-funded, and like they said, about 20 to 25% of that is inflation and medical costs. They don't take into account what we have in our self-funding bank account. So, it's really up to you guys what you want to set the insurance rates at. Just, we can go up 2%, 3% from what current we, and again, we haven't changed the rates since then, so, budget-wise, I don't know. Christian would probably like it to stay the same, but the big problem is, I don't want it to come, if our self-funding account gets hit hard, then one year we'd have to go up from $596 to $600 and...
then one year we'd have to go up from five hundred ninety-six dollars to six hundred and fifty per employee. It's a big jump, which technically, it isn't a big jump in one year, we've just not increased our rates to the different departments for that, we've just absorbed it in the self-insurance fund itself. So if you feel there's a need to go up on the cost, to make sure we spread the right cost to the right funds, then that's what I need to know, is one question I need to know.
I think we should try to move the cost, I think we should still fund the entire cost, but I think we should try to move the cost, not try to get all the way to the six fifty, but we didn't move the cost last year or the year before, did we?
Right, no, we haven't.
We haven't moved the cost at all. And so I think we should move the cost to about six hundred and twenty dollars a month, still cover the full cost. But then, one of the other things that we had talked about too, was not increasing any of the dependent costs that we pass along, keeping the dependent coverage costs the same. Trying to keep that benefit the same for all employees. So there's no additional cost to the employees, it's just an additional, it'd be just additional money that would go into the health insurance fund.
And at six twenty, from where we currently are, is about a four point five percent increase. Dollar-wise, depending on how many people that, that we currently have on the plan, it'd be about eighty-four thousand dollars more out of the current budget, an increase, and that's spread over five funds, probably five funds. And then the dependent cost wouldn't be much, probably, if we absorbed that four point five percent increase of the dependence cost, maybe four thousand, you know, for the number of people that take it, then, I understood the county would absorb that increase, and then we would just be paying more and not changing the net effect to the employee.
Questions, comments, changes?
No, we had talked about increasing the co-pay on.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're gonna get there, yeah.
No, I, I think.
This was just, it's no cost to the employee, we're still covering the full cost, it's just getting the cost closer to what they actually, what the market cost is.
It's. Everybody's is going up, you know, it's, it's.
Yeah, most peoples are going up fourteen to twenty-five percent.
Yeah, it's, it's a cap region, we're.
Fully funded.
It's, no, I think that's, that's.
Any, Jeff, any thoughts?
I'll go to the co-pay stuff too, Walter.
Okay, before we approve anything, that's fine.
And then there was a discussion over the prescriptions, as far as the PPO versus the HSA. As you know, the HSA, you're gonna be paying the first twenty-five hundred, I'm talking as an individual, first twenty-five hundred dollars of medical and drugs, and then the next two thousand, you'll be paying a co-pay on your drugs. But as far as the PPO is concerned, we've always had fifteen, thirty-five, and sixty, depending on what tier the drugs fall on. As you know, the prescription part of the overall cost is increasing more than the medical cost is, at a rate more. It's not half of it or anything by any means, but it, it increases faster, the prescription does. So Joe came up with some options for us, as far as, you know, maybe increasing that fifteen, thirty-five, sixty are going to a percent base. A percent base is more of a way that most businesses are going anymore because of the drug cost. So instead of paying ten dollars, or fifteen dollars for a prescription, you pay ten percent of the cost. Now, most, where I understand, if your drug is on tier one, ten percent is actually less than fifteen dollars on most of the drugs that are out there. It becomes, when you get to tier three, that a sixty dollar drug now may cost you ninety dollars or something. Or it depends on what kind of drug you're on, you know, so, it goes more to a business sense of you, the ones that use it pay. So it's, it's up to you guys, you wanna do a percentage base, a co-pay base. We still have the specialties at twenty-five percent with no.
Do we have those attached somewhere, I mean, I can't find my papers.
I know, we had a, we had a drug, what, a couple of years ago, it was three thousand plus dollars. That was a specialty drug, but.
When did she get us these, all these numbers and stuff, last week?
There is.
Is this what she gave us last week?
No, she actually did, she didn't.
So what do we have to decide today, and this is stuff that I feel I'll look over and to see what changes are some to make and stuff.
The, there's not a whole lot of change there, and I don't know if you can see that, but there's, and all this really affects people on the PPO plan, because people on the HSA plan pay the full deductible before they start receiving the co-pay. So anyway, the cost to go to ten percent is an increase to the, to the member of, total, total cost would be seventy-five hundred dollars to the members, that's all members over, what, six, eight months? Is what they did there?
For the first eight months of this year.
What's seventy-five hundred at all, yeah?
I wrote it here, I wrote it next to it.
That's gonna be the cost for who?
Okay, well, based on the net up above.
To the employees, to the employees and the members.
Yeah, to the, for the PPO plan. There has been three thousand seventy-two prescriptions for our program. Currently, you can see at the top that what we pay, less discount, what the member pays, and what the county ends up paying, basically, the employee is paying fifteen percent of the share of the total cost of prescriptions on the PPO, and forty-seven percent on HSA, because again, they pay the first, all their drugs upfront, until they reach their deductible, and then they go to the co-pays. But then the ten percent, if you went to a ten percent, it would actually increase the cost to the members, seven thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents. Now, how many members that, how many prescriptions, somebody could be on six and somebody could be on none. It goes to the people that use it.
The seven thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars goes to the people that use it?
Yes, they pay that.
Will cost them additional, and I don't know what drugs are.
So, so the employee would pay additionally if we went to a ten percent co-insurance. And it would be a minimal additional cost, she just ran some numbers. Total cost to all employees countywide that filled a prescription in seventeen would be seven thousand six hundred dollars. They would have to pay more of the cost for the, for their prescriptions.
So if you had three thousand claims and you got seven thousand dollars, that means you're talking two dollars a prescription difference?
Right, some, sums are gonna go down, some prescriptions are gonna go down, and the higher ones are gonna go up, because it's based on a percent now, if you did.
Yeah, I think a lot of, I, I do blood pressure medicine and, and cholesterol, and I think they're both generic, so. Adam?
I mean, that's the cost, and then the PPO, it would actually go up nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars, so. You can see at a twenty percent, that becomes a very higher, higher to the employees, at a twenty-six percent pass to the employees. In this eight month period.
I'm okay with the ten percent, I hate to do twenty percent.
Of course, once they get to their deductible, they don't pay any.
Just drugs.
Yeah, so, once, once you reach, what's the maximum out of pocket on a PPO, is it thirty?
Some PPOs, four thousand one hundred and fifty, on prescription.
Right, so once they get to there, if they have high-priced drugs, they don't pay anything after they hit their deductible. Thoughts, Jeff?
How much is this gonna change our, what we pay?
It's the same, it won't change that, I mean, it, the seventy-five hundred currently we are paying, the fund is paying. It just makes the employee more aware of what the drugs actually cost.
It's not gonna affect our cost on our health insurance at all?
Actually, actually saves, saves us money in our health insurance fund.
I got seventy-five hundred.
Okay, that's what I was getting, that's what we actually do, just give it pass on.
So if you get mono and get a prescription, you might pay a little bit more.
Probably, it's that, I should stop dealing with you saying. Saying, 'cause that's the stuff that.
I love you too.
Id and stuff. I'd say, no, I'm not on drugs, I don't even know what they do.
Maybe you should be, I'm not sorry.
So I'm good with going to the ten percent and then the twenty-five percent on the specialty with no cap. You good with that, Jeff, or?
I think we did a really good job, I, you know, reading, reading the unterrified Democrat, you know, they're, they're going with that county insurance that they had talked to us about, and I think even with the insurance they've got, they still pay like two hundred and fifty dollars a month.
I see the ten percent, where's the other?
Uh, it's not on there, but I think what we had done in the past was a twenty-five percent on specialty, and that was all those real high-priced drugs.
So we're staying at twenty-five on specialty?
Yes.
So the only thing we're changing is going to the ten percent instead of the.
Co-pay.
Current contribution co-pay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So fine with that part of it?
Okay.
Okay, and the next benefit change would be the emergency room, as far as, we're currently on the HSA, you pay deductible co-insurance, on the traditional plan, you pay two hundred dollars for the co-pay. So yes, we have increased twenty-six percent visits to the ER from two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen. So the cost then has gone up quite a bit too, because of that.
Papers on that too, did we have this information last week?
Well, that's what our current rate is, that's what we're currently have, so I can give you a card.
She gave us last week?
No, she didn't go over that last week.
Right now, we pay two hundred, I went once, I think at the time I've been here, I went once to the ER. Most of the time you'll go to urgent care, to quick care.
Yeah, and urgent care has gone up too, but that's what, you know, the cost isn't near as high now.
No.
So if you're.
What did you recommend?
If you're, if you're on the HSA, you basically pay the full cost, if you haven't met your deductible. If you're on the PPO, you pay a flat two hundred bucks, and that's it. So, take it to three hundred plus twenty percent co-insurance.
Okay, where'd y'all come up with those numbers?
That was a recommendation from Joe, just kind of a trend, but anyway, so basically.
What did she recommend last week, when we were talking about this?
She didn't go through that last week, we didn't really get down in the weeds, but, you know, we could, we could just say, okay, you're on a PPO, you, you pay everything, you pay all of it, you pay the full deductible, and then when you hit your deductible, you know, then you start paying eighty, twenty, or whatever it is, so. But instead, we just bump it up a little bit, have them pay the first three hundred plus twenty percent of the co-insurance. Or we could say, nope, you pay, you pay it all until you hit your deductible.
Kind of like the HSA has currently.
Emergency room's the most expensive care that you can utilize. I think now with, with the urgent care, some quick cares and things like that, most of the time, people could probably get the same, same outcome just going to those, and it's much less than going to the ER. You know, now if you fall and break your arm or leg, or crack your skull open, then you wanna go to the ER, but.
Or we can do something different too, we could just do a flat three hundred bucks, we could do a flat five hundred bucks, but I mean, you never know what you're gonna get into when you go to the emergency room, and to say that you're only responsible for the first two hundred, that's, that's pretty cheap.
Yeah.
And if you're admitted, then it becomes something totally different.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
We, I did kinda try to compare this to the city, to the state, so, I'll give you that.
And what did I?
State, they have an HSA, so it would be kinda like our HSA is hanging on, the PPO that they have, it's a hundred dollars plus ten percent. So they're paying ten percent of everything in there, the city is still at two hundred dollars. But they also pay some for their insurance out the city. It may, the employees do. Is the way I understand it.
We raised it a couple of years ago to two hundred.
Yes.
I think it was a hundred, because it tried to deter people from going to the emergency room, and obviously, I think that helped for a short time, and then inflation kinda caught us, and of course, it could just be a trend too, but anyway.
Yeah, fine with three hundred and twenty percent, I don't see it being any less than that.
And those are basically the only changes we had, and I, we can go back to now what we want to charge each fund, and the six hundred and fifty, I'm sorry, six twenty that Chris had mentioned. And then you guys picking up the cost for, additional cost for the dependents, if you wanna stay at least halfway to where they said, you know.
Did Joe send you any numbers that tell you how much the change in hospital would save the health insurance?
What was that?
Going to three hundred plus the co-insurance.
How much that would save the health insurance if you made that change?
It's, it's hard to say, I mean, because, you know, obviously, people that need to use the ER are gonna, gonna pay it, I mean, so it's gonna save us a hundred dollars a visit every time, so.
Eighty-two hundred, maybe, I mean, depending on how, based on two thousand sixteen, there was eighty-two people that visited the ER, so an extra hundred plus co-insure, I don't know, depends what they're there for.
Okay, so you wanna raise it up to the six fifty?
Six twenty, just try to, try to keep up, I mean, it's, it's not a cost to the employee, it's a cost to some of the different funds, but there's no additional cost, we're still covering the full cost. We thought that would be a good, good compromise, so that we're keeping up to close to what market cost is. Do we wanna talk about these other things that you had sent us, basics, vigilant drug list? No? Just gonna have, go ahead and implement all those.
Oh, yes, we need to, yeah, sorry.
Where's your six twenty cost at, I've got this stuff way last week, where it was going up to six fifty.
It's, it's right.
Well, yeah.
Six fifty.
That, that was an actuarial cost, so that's what they say that our cost should be. We were at five ninety.
Six.
Six. So we were at five ninety-six, we haven't increased our, our number, we, we still covered the full cost, but we never increased our number. So actuarial cost last year, I don't know, six and a quarter or something like that, I have no idea, but. So they're just trying to give you what the market cost would be for the. So they're just trying to give you what the market cost would be for the insurance policy that we have, and that's where they're getting the six fifty. Obviously, I don't, you know, if we want to try to do other things and, and try to, you know, find some money to give our employees raises and other things, you know.
Currently, we're not spending that amount for employee.
Right.
Because the health insurance fund is certainly healthy.
Right.
Don't say that.
The health insurance fund is healthy, but we need to continue to make it healthy, and maybe we can do some wellness things and some other things there too, but anyway. So it was kind of a compromise, and instead of not moving it at all, if we stay at the five ninety-six, and then next year, we have another big increase, next thing you know, that actuarial cost will be at six seventy-five, seven hundred dollars, and we haven't moved our cost at all. And then it becomes a bigger hit to try to keep up with what the actual cost should have been. So it's, it's really no additional cost to the employee.
It's just going into the fund.
Yes. I mean, we can, we can make it something different if you want, it doesn't matter, I mean, that was just kind of a happy.
I'm just trying to figure out where y'all came up with these numbers from, I hadn't seen them before, I had the numbers that Joe gave us last week, and so all this stuff was new today. So I didn't know where your recommendations were coming from. I know y'all were talking earlier before this meeting, but, you know, I wasn't in on that, I didn't hear anything about you having meetings with the city. So I'll find them. There was a shot over the mountain. The, you said six twenty-six is what we go to the fund then?
Six twenty.
Six twenty.
Six twenty, okay.
And then I'll figure all the other rates according to that, and then the difference leaving the dependent costs the same, putting that additional cost to the, to the county to pay for dependents. That will increase our percentage of what we're subsidizing for dependents.
And leaving dependent costs the same is really a, a benefit to, to our employees, cause that's not, that's not what a lot of other entities are doing, so.
I do need, on the drug, back to the drug, there are three different ways Optum RX can help us to help reduce the cost of drugs to, in the future, not currently. There's three programs, a new drug to market program, which if the county implements that, there's no employees currently using any drugs that are on that list, so it won't affect anybody for you, which is a good time to do it, let's say. It's, if we're in that program, then it has to undergo P and T review before the employee is eligible to get those mar, to get those drugs. So Joe is advocating for that, that we go ahead and get into that now. With, nobody involved in these three, there's no actual true cost savings for us right now, potentially, there may be. And then there's a non-essential application which no employee is in now, it's a non-FDA approved drugs, that they would have to go through a scope of P and T review before the employee be eligible to get those, so. And then a Me Too, it's a new formula, new brand formula, that they would also have to go through a P and T review before employee be eligible. Again, at this point, no employees are taking these drugs, so it wouldn't affect now, but it potentially could affect the, the fund in the future. So I'd ask you to approve those three. That we opt into those.
Did we get anything on that last week?
No.
So what you just told us is all it seems so far.
Yep.
Man, I'll find what it is. Just be nice to have that information beforehand. And, you know, whether we read through it or not, it's our own. Good, it's all. Read to me right now.
I think, uh, the new drugs to market is just basically brand-new drugs that are coming out, and they got a really high price tag on them, and just making, so the Optum RX kind of analyzes these things and seeing if they're really a necessity for those people to take, usually, the cost is outrageous. I think the Me Too is one where, I think you've seen a lot of these ads on TV, and everybody thinks that they need to take that drug as well, and so the drug people are out there trying to promote certain drugs, and so.
You hear about all the side effects, and you go, I don't think I want to take that.
Anyway, there's, a lot of times, there's, uh, generic forms of those drugs out there, and so it just basically says, hey, try the generic first, and before, you know, you try this other drug, so it's just trying to keep our cost down, so.
And with the change to the copay, I think our employees will be asking more questions. Will be saying, is there something else I can take, is there, you know?
Is there a generic version of, yeah?
Good with it?
I think there's, I think there's a generic drug for Xanax too, if you want, if you need that.
Send us, that's all I would need, is something, a little bit of, information on that.
So, what do you? Do you need to, you need a motion to approve all this, Debbie?
Yes, please.
So you want to do it all at once, or?
Oh, you can.
So are those three things, the vigilant drug list?
Yes.
So we got the health insurance premium to six, six twenty? Right?
Mm-hmm.
We got the ER to three hundred plus twenty percent.
Yes.
Co-insurance. We have the, uh, dependent coverage will remain the same. Okay? And then the vigilant drug list, what else?
And the copay on drugs?
Ten percent co-insurance on the drug. Co-ins, uh, is that ten percent co-insurance for prescriptions?
For tier one, two, and three.
Okay.
And specialty will stay at twenty-five.
Okay. All right, I'll try to get all this at once.
The one, the one other thing I would ask, the HSA amount that you're contributing, be what the difference is between four point five percent, that that additional HSA money would then be from the PPO plan to the HMO, that difference would then go into the HSA. That would be increased, let's put it that way.
Okay. So that would be reflective in the six twenty?
Yes.
All right, I move that we set the health insurance premium at six hundred and twenty dollars per month, per employee, with the HSA coverage increase, HSA.
Contribution.
Contribution being the difference, the dependent coverage remaining the same. The emergency room visits going to three hundred dollars plus twenty percent co-insurance. We adopt the vigilant drug list. And we set the copay for tier one, two, and three drugs at ten percent co-insurance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I know there was a big.
No change.
Oh, no, it's some additional. There was a big push at one point to, you know, get our employees more active and, in their healthcare, as far as, um, HSA makes you a better consumer than the PPO does. I know you guys subsidize, and we're gonna subsidize even more based on the increase to the people who have the HSA. The HSA is not the biggest user here, most of our employees are on the PPO. Most of them understand PPO versus HSA, we try to educate them every year. But technically, a major event, you're better off with the HSA. You're gonna pay more out-of-pocket right away, but you're gonna pay less overall. But, um, we pushed last year, and so the out-of-pocket cost for the HSA maximum is less than the traditional, and that's what makes it more attractive. Is there anything else you guys may want to do to entice people to take the HSA or anything like that, other than what we're subsidizing for them to put in the HSA? That's my only question.
So typically, people that are on the HSA are usually a more, are more, more involved in their healthcare decisions, and take a, a little more active role, um, in, in the cost associated with that. And so, one of the thoughts would be to incentivize people to take or to switch from a PPO to an HSA. And, uh, as costs keep going up, the HSA seems to help us offset our costs more.
Does it get kicked off at eight sixty-five?
Not yet.
Can you have any HSA after sixty-five?
You may not be able to contribute, I don't know, I have to check.
You can pay out what you have, but you can't contribute.
You can't contribute anymore. But I don't know on a group plan, I think we continue to.
If you go back to a PPO.
Yeah.
We have that, I had that issue a couple of years ago.
Anyway, it's just a thought, I mean, we had, um, we just talked around about, a lot of people are hesitant to get on the HSA at the beginning, cause they're worried about their upfront costs, and so, you know, obviously, we're contributing to that HSA account every month, but, you know, could we get more people to take the HSA if we had a, a five hundred dollar stipend, or whatever, that we put into their HSA account to get it started?
You gonna pay it to us that already have HSA?
No.
Well.
And you can talk about that. Cause it's, it will be open enrollment, and it's a one-time deal, you know, that they can move from one plan to another right now, or, you know, when they're hired, obviously.
You should get me five hundred to stay. I'm not inclined to do it.
And with the new health insurance, we would have just taken a chainsaw and cut off John's leg, I mean.
You know, I just gave him a good cup of coffee.
Leave a quarter.
It's a benefit too, that my thing could be, like, just saying, you know. I like it. I think everybody will do it, everybody got the reasons for not doing it, so.
We don't have to decide anything today, but it's, I guess, or do we?
Well, I'll definitely have to know before I open enrollment. I'm gonna start that, I'd like to give them the information here soon, cause we're talking about meetings to September, November first and second. I mean, it may entice some to move.
So how many do we have on HSA now?
I'd say it's less than fifteen percent.
I mean, I like the idea, I think, I think it's maybe as people think about it a little bit harder.
Yeah.
You know, obviously, it's a little bit scary if you have to go to the doctor right off the bat after you get health insurance, and you got this huge deductible, but.
But I do kind of agree with Jeff, that, you know, the ones that are already, they don't get the five hundred dollars, and say we get another ten percent, we give them five hundred dollars, that's not fair, I mean, the fifteen percent that are already on it.
Yes, it's eighteen point six. I mean, right now, out-of-pocket is different on both of them, so the benefits aren't the same, but again, they reach it at different points, and some may never reach it, you know.
Yeah.
So. It's just an idea, if you guys want to think about it, and maybe.
Well, that, I mean, the, really, the big benefit is, you know, if you contribute to your HSA, obviously, the county's contributing to it, but if you contribute to it, those are pre-tax dollars, and so you can put more money into your HSA because it's pre-taxed, and so, you know, that, that saves you money when you have to go and pay your medical bills. So, it is a benefit, it's, but some people, you know, just don't, aren't the best with their finances, and so, anyway, it's, it's a scary deal for them as they try to start that.
You know, we've had people, as long as we've had HSA, they'll leave here, retire, and then they will, you know, get to enjoy that money after they leave here, the money that we put in, knock wood that they haven't gone, had to use any of them. Then some people may have to get in it in December, and turn around and have to get into it in January, you just don't, you know, it's a gamble. It's definitely up to you guys, if you want to entice that open enrollment for people to switch, or to stay, cause they could move.
Yeah.
Let me think about, talk about it next week.
We'll come back to it.
Yeah, cause they really, the HSA money, you know, you can use, you, you can use for your dependents, for your spouse, even though they're not on the plan here. And we try to tell that to them at open enrollments and different meetings, you know, so, and it's not a user lose, like the old time cafeteria plan that we still have, but, yeah, you can use that money for dependents, or. And then even when you leave here, if you can't add to it, you can still use it for long-term care, you can use it for a lot of stuff, so, but it's all regulated by the feds.
Sounds like the CDC educated about it.
And a comfort zone, you know, that's all about, getting the employees comfortable with that, but we try as best we can to explain it to them, and then Joe does a really good job of it.
So you're saying we should have them getting a massage while we explain to them?
Money always entices people, so.
All right, let's move forward.
Okay, let's move on. Uh, first reading of budget adjustment number eight.
This is for twenty-six thousand thirty dollars. This is, um, the sheriff's department contacted me about transferring, or doing a court order for, they have an additional amount of money in their surplus property of over six thou, twenty-six thousand thirty dollars, and they like it to put back into capital. Earlier in the year, we did do that for Public Works, they did have some equipment they wanted to purchase that was not on their budget currently in seventeen, but this is a first reading, no action today, if you guys have any questions. If you guys have any questions, we can talk about it before you approve it 10 days from now. If you've got any questions, John's here.
What do we sell?
These are several vehicles. These are our vehicles that's been going to the dealership and he's been selling them for us. So we're getting quite a bit more money from them. That was part of the plan, remember, last year when we came that we were going to try to start rotating some of these vehicles out a little bit earlier to be able to make more money to come back into our new car budget to be able to purchase more vehicles.
High-pursued vehicles.
Yeah, it's coming, as far as you know.
Sorry, Chris, I never told you that.
So you're just wanting this money to go back into your capital so you can buy new vehicles?
Yes, it's going to go back into the vehicle account so we can, so we can buy more vehicles to look down the past.
I guess you use part of it to cover the cost of the new van as well?
Yes, that will be part of it, yes. And a new impala, because we had the impala at Towardville, it just cost us another three grand, so it's time for it to go bye-bye.
We budgeted $15,000 in there as far as revenue coming in and this is over that, but we also, actually we budgeted 30,000, so I'm not sure why we dropped the revenue this year, so it's probably why there was excess.
Okay, no action, right?
No action today.
Okay. First reading of budget adjustment number nine.
This is for $171,355.16. This is to make the neighborhood improvement fund for the Parkview Meadows, balance out in that fund, actually put the money in there so we can pay the closing cost and transfer the money back to Rowan Branch for their overage of the short-term note. So, no action today.
Okay. Cole County Health Department, billing specialist position.
Do you need copies of edits and tuning up?
Yeah, I've got them.
Thanks. Yep. I brought my backup. So, as we've been talking about making transitions, expanding services, or just collecting revenue for the services that we've already, that we're already doing, and we know that, you know, public health departments are not huge revenue generators, but a lot of other health departments are having success getting contracts with private insurance companies and billing insurance for like the immunizations we provide instead of using that VaxCare service that only pays us?
$12.
$12 per vaccine. Like right now, they send us the vaccine, we administer it, they give us $12. They bill the private insurance and they get however much the private insurance will pay for that vaccine and that administration fee. So, like I said, a lot of other local public health agencies are having success getting those private contracts themselves with insurance companies and we would like to do that. We have a clerical position that is a person that's retiring in November, so instead of filling it as a regular clerical, we would like to fill it as a billing specialist. The insurance billing is a little bit more complicated than a normal clerical job, you know, if you don't have the right modifier on that CPT code, they won't pay it. So it requires an attention to detail. There is a medical coding, like certificate, that people can get along with, you know, just experience with electronic health records. So our typical clerical position makes anywhere from $22,000 to $26,000 a year depending on their years of seniority and we would like this person to start out at $32,000. We do have our excess money in our salary line for this year because we had some vacancies. Actually, it's probably around $50,000, if I've used my numbers right, that we have in excess of this year, like I said, because of vacancies. But we would have to build that extra, basically $6,000 into the budget for next year to pay for the new person over what the current person is making. But we hopefully will generate more revenue by billing these insurance companies and...
You have a kind of projection as to?
No, what did, Audrain County said they increased their revenue.
Quite a bit.
Right, it was like?
$50,000.
Yeah. Audrain County had said that in a year they increased their revenue by like $50,000. But I will say that they do some things in Audrain County that other people don't provide, like some of the occupational stuff for businesses. And here in Cole County, a lot of other places do that, like Cap Breach and St. Mary's, so there's not a need for that, but just vaccinations alone, we will be able to increase our revenue quite a bit. But it's hard to say how much.
With the nurse practitioner, can we increase?
If we, if we decide to hire a nurse practitioner next year, if that's approved in our budget and we are able to hire a nurse practitioner to see sick people and we can bill for those services, yes, we will, that will be another revenue maker.
Didn't we have some savings in the salary line by combining two positions or something?
Well, we, yeah, we've done that several times over the years. I think that prior to me, there actually was a separate billing person and that it was combined with the office manager. So in this way, we're sort of combining, taking that billing person and putting it with a clinical person. At one time, there was a separate epidemiologist versus an emergency planner and now that person, I think it was when Patrick left, they took the epi part and gave it to Jamie and they took the emergency planning part and gave it to an environmental person. So there has been some combining and switching over the years.
I was thinking that you just did something here recently that, maybe you...
Oh, oh, Karen Hinch's physician, when she retired, we took our part-time IDCLC and combined it with a WIC certifier. So we're eliminating that part-time position. Sorry, I was thinking on the clinic side, not on the WIC side, but yes, we just did that. Thank you.
And there was some savings to the salary line there, right?
Yes, but that's mostly WIC money and that's separate from this money, but yes.
So I had friends who came out and got shots before they left the country. So we, $12 is what we can bill them?
Well, that's what VaxCare pays us to administer those vaccines, but if we get contracts with private insurance, we'd be able to bill the private insurance for whatever they would pay.
Oh, sorry. I shouldn't be laughing, but that just comes around right back to us. So if you, if we, if I come in and you give me a shot and I pay 12 bucks or whatever...
Well, you would pay nothing, but VaxCare would give us $12, yes.
Right. Anyway, if you build the insurance and you'd be billing the county and you could bill them $100 or whatever, so.
Which is why for flu shots, the county just buys the flu vaccine.
I know, and I, I get that, but I mean, you know.
Right, but VaxCare would bill the insurance right now.
People go in and they pay the $10 copayer, they pay the 10% and of course, you know, since we're self-funded, it comes back on the backend and so the county ends up paying the cost.
But kind of like we talked about with the nurse practitioner, though, if we set it up to where the county employees could see that person for free, that's going to help.
Right, right. No, I think there's ways that we can, we can figure out a way to save it, but I mean, you know, if I go to the doctor and the same thing, you know, it comes back to the county paying the cost, so.
It does.
I think once we get the new billing, I think we can add some services.
I think we can too.
We do do a lot of STD testing.
I'm sorry?
We do a lot of STD testing and a lot of people come in and have private insurance, so we could actually bill for that as well. And well, I know, but you know.
I know.
People don't want to go to their regular doctor, so.
We do a lot of that. People have regular insurance, but they prefer to come to the health department for their STD testing because they don't want their doctor to know. So we could bill the insurance for that.
I'm just waiting for you to make something.
I didn't say anything.
Knock you out of your chair.
Testing that in the Jeff Elscher room?
I didn't say anything.
You're the one that, no. All right, so if it doesn't show an increase in revenue, then are we going to have to take that away from the clinical specialist and do something, go back to the way we were doing it?
We could do that. We could give it a trial for a year and see if it's worth having those private contracts or not, if it's a lot of work and it's not paying off, you know?
We did some changes before that you came and recommended and we eliminated a position, moved some stuff around and changed, and we did, we built these offices too, so.
If Audrain County is making $50,000, we are much...
I'll jump in, might be listed.
That's fine, we are much, much bigger.
Oh, okay.
It, it seems to be a trend that, you know, it's not just Audrain County, there's several LPHAs or, you know, everyone's kind of moving, this is kind of the new trend, because everyone realizes that, you know, state government, we're not getting any more money from, from DHSS. That, that money is, you know, we're 50th in the nation.
Well, we, we're the boringest guys who are crossing crossroads and they're trying to capture more revenue, so.
Everything else is hard, so this should be easy.
Will our upfront cost of vaccines increase? Like right now, does VaxCare cover the cost of the vaccine so we would actually be purchasing the vaccine upfront?
Right, but we, we kind of left our vaccine budget, our immunization budget unchanged.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, let's try it.
Yeah.
Start this, so we're reports on each other's own.
Also, I was going to ask you if this is a good time. Do you want me to come and report about that quarterly prescription drug monitoring report that I sent? Do you want to talk about it or just reading it that St. Louis County sent was that good enough?
I reckon it is interesting. I don't want you to come up and do it unless you want to...
Okay, I just want to make sure.
No, I thought it was pretty interesting too.
It is interesting.
Yeah, it's, it's a good...
If you get a chance, Google the 60-minute report that was on the other day about opioid opioid use and how some of that legislation got through United States Congress.
That was the next segment.
Yeah, yeah.
We do have a opioid task force meeting on Tuesday afternoon at 2:00. They're having these regional opioid summits and at the end of it, they're going to give you time for each local, kind of talk about what strategies they want to implement, but the one for central region is not till November 29th and, I mean frankly, I just don't want to wait that long, so we've kind of been talking, a small group about stuff that we could do. The opioid report's very interesting, but from what we hear from JCPD, it sounds like in Cole County and Jefferson City, it's just a straight, street heroin issue. So there's lots of us talking about, well, how can we help with that too? So it's a very complex issue. It's not as easy as just seeing what prescriptions people are getting.
JCPD says that we have, it's, it's getting worse and worse and worse.
Right. Yeah, I mean, Jerry reported on the number of Narcan, you know, they've done this year versus last year and it's what, we're set on pace to double or triple. So, anyway, it's an interesting issue. We'll keep working on it. So you guys are good with the billing specialist?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Assessor's office to present prorated occupancy.
Okay, I'm going to recu... Sorry, I'll come back to you. On this, I included some information in the email and this actually has the assessed value, which would be a little bit different. We had a, in, what ended up happening is we had a property that should have been prorated for September that was not and we're just coming in to get that added, added on.
So what is, usually it says what parcel is and maybe the owner is and everything?
Usually we just have the address. It's just a taxpayer that we've, we've worked with. I've talked to them and they're okay with the assessment, with the value and not, and they've been given all the information for, the same as everybody, for how they can dispute their value and the occupancy notice that they would have got for the change in our property.
Just add the...
No, normally we just have the addresses. And this was over on Route C. 5024, Route C.
That's all I'm asking, I thought that usually there's an address on there and everything.
Yeah.
So.
Just, it was with the staffing being shorthanded in the office and follow through with everything involved, it was overlooked when we did the original listings, so we're just adding it on.
Okay, I'm just making sure because of being somebody that is involved here, make sure everything's on the up and up.
Yes, sir.
So, okay. Adding it to the books, basically.
Correct, just to the increase of the, of the improvements in the property.
Okay.
Yeah, I was trying to...
You want to make a motion?
I'll second.
And then, yeah.
We need a motion to approve.
Correct, so that the, so the collector can go ahead and get it in their, their system and the clerketing system for the changes, for the tax bill cycle.
For that address?
Correct.
5024?
5024.
Okay, for that address. That was a moment.
Okay, I second. All in favor?
Aye.
And since it looks like the county's buying government, I'll see you in December with a, another one there.
I don't know if they were getting it since it was their church and it may not have been in the decks on it anyway.
I don't know, I'm not sure.
You need to get on there earlier so you have a scheduled old meeting and listen to us. Took care of this first thing and get this down and out. Oh, you know, we so far, yeah.
Okay.
That was easy.
EMS night shift differential discussion.
I make y'all say it all the time, I would do that on purpose.
So, in my...
You know, unless you know that, come back in, just eat. Eat that stuff to get that property. Looks like he's getting coffee for all of us.
I figured you were going across the hall.
You get some of my medicine?
I don't need any of this. We got therapy.
He's got to massage your chair.
Okay, on that note, I'll send you this one. In, in our initial budget discussion and the, and with the elimination of the 24-hour shifts, we talked about having a night shift differential. The public safety community is kind of mixed on whether they offer this or not. The healthcare industry does across the board, so we're kind of across between that. But the email that I sent you kind of took into account what some local, it's the $2 an hour that I proposed was actually less than what most of the healthcare agencies are offering in the area. And the main reason for doing this is, is actually twofold really. One is that with the elimination of the 24-hour shifts, a lot of folks are taking a pay cut, if you will, by losing scheduled overtime. And it gives folks the option of helping to recoup that by working the night shift, which is a less appealing shift than the day shift. Second is that generally speaking, the most senior people navigate toward the, the day shift and that leaves all the new guys at night. And granted, they've all passed their tests, they've all passed orientation and they're all qualified EMTs and medics, but it would be nice to have a mix of senior people on the night shift with the, with the newer people as well. So if, if we did the $2 an hour increase, it would be right at $70,000 a year plus benefits for the field and $8,760 for dispatch. What that is, is only the, there's 20 people that will be on the night shift when we eliminate the 24-hour shifts. It would only be those 20 people when they work the night shift. So that's where that number comes from. It's just basically simple math. And then there's one dispatcher on at nights and... So that's where that number comes from, it's just basically simple math, and then there's one dispatcher on at nights, and to be honest, the dispatch issue is more philosophic than anything, it's hard to not give the one remaining person at night not the differential when you're giving it to everybody else, so it's more of a philosophic thing rather than a recruiting tool or anything like that, so. The reason that we may, need to make a decision now is we finally have our shift schedule set, what we're going to do in two thousand and eighteen and people are asking the question, will there be a differential or won't there be a differential? And it's hard for them to select a shift if they don't know, so in fairness to them, we need to make a decision and move forward either way.
So this will be effective as of twenty eighteen?
Yes.
As of what dollar now, are you suggesting?
Two dollars an hour.
So will the night shift, will they still be working toward, working on the day shift, I mean, or?
They might be, but generally what happens when you go to a, I'll call it a platoon system, we're going to have days and nights, people generally if the night shift person picks up another shift, it'll be on nights. They won't do many day shifts, if they do, my understanding is with our payroll system, they'll get that amount on the day shift as well. We don't have a way to do two pay. Two pay rates.
It's the overtime one?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody staring at the floor.
Just laughing.
I hate to see you happy, John.
He's up to no good.
I can tell he's up to no good.
I just want him on a just say no shirts for me, so. Since I would say no.
Then when it, does it say I say no, not just say no?
Maybe I want everybody to say no, just agree with me, okay? You don't have to make this difficult, we've been here a long time already.
I've been agreeing with you a lot lately, that's kind of scary.
You'll keep going.
Sorry, Jeff.
You're not here to have fun. Work is not the fun.
Okay, we got Bob, we got Bob here first time, now he's going to go back and write.
Where are you at on that thing?
I'm, I'm reminded, I'm reminded that just over a year knowledge, we've got quite a savings in the scheduled overtime reduction of the twenty-four hour shifts, this, this makes it essentially a wash. A quick calculation of scheduled overtime reduction, seventy thousand.
Without doing this, are we going to have? Are we going to be able to fill the night shifts?
Yes. We'll be able to fill the night shift no matter what.
Matter what?
But like I said, this, this is a recruiting tool, so we got, we have a night shift opening and we're out recruiting a paramedic. It, there are no day shift opportunities, so this also helps us recruit that person. It, it may be a case that somebody from days will go to nights because of the two dollars an hour, but what we've seen in the initial rollout of our schedule is that pretty much with rare exception, all of the more senior people have gravitated to the day shift. And so like I said, there's, there's a variety of reasons that I, I would propose that we do this. But recruiting's one, getting some more senior people on the night shift is two, getting some consistency in the night shift is three. Eliminate a lot of those kinds of movements that they tend to see.
So an EMT who works day shift will make two dollars less than?
Correct.
An EMT working night shift?
No, the night shift makes two dollars more.
I mean, takes two dollars more. The day, the day, the day shift EMT will make two dollars less than the.
So the way to look at it is, starting pay for paramedics is seventeen twenty eight, so entry level paramedic who starts, if he's assigned to the day shift, will get seventeen twenty eight, if he is assigned the night shift, he'll get nineteen twenty eight.
Basically, the night shift's less desirable, so it would help.
Yeah.
Fill it up.
I don't, is this only for new people coming on, or you want to give this to?
This is the twenty people that are assigned to the night shift.
So the ones that are currently moving from a twenty-four to a twelve that are already getting a three or a two, would get another two on top of that?
Yes.
And we've got rates all over the place, is.
I don't think this is a good idea, but anyway, we've made a lot of changes and.
It's, you got to remember that three and the two is, is, predates me, it's the transition that softened the blow of the financial hardship created by eliminating the twenty-four hour shift.
Three and two was there for the, so basically the twenty-four hours with their mandatory overtime basically would offset, make it equal to the regular shift.
Yeah, and it's not, it's still not equal, it's still, it's still a loss, but it, it helps soften that blow, that's how John explained it to me, so.
And maybe we shouldn't have done that from the get-go.
That's, that's true, but keep in mind, they'd get a dollar and a quarter no matter what, because there's a dollar and a quarter hour disparity between the twenty-four hour rate and the, the twelve hour rate right now. So when you're talking two and three dollars, it's, it's not as much as it would seem, because they're going to get a dollar and a quarter anyway because that's the existing difference in the, in the hourly rate.
That will technically go away anyway.
Yeah, that twenty-four hour rate will go away, once, once the dust clears and everybody's transitioned in January that twenty-four hour rate will go away, so it'll be one wage scale for EMTs and one wage scale for paramedics, full and part-time, doesn't matter, one scale.
I think it's a slippery slope, I mean, you're going to have the sheriff coming back to you and he's going to want a differential for people working nights.
He already said no, I don't want to speak for him, but he told us not to.
You got Public Works, you got other people that work nights, I mean.
I think the difference is there, too, is these people are consistently on nights, you look at Public Works, they're they're not scheduled for nights consistently, Sheriff's Department rotates through nights.
They work nights, they get more than two dollars an hour more.
Right, these people are, are set on nights permanently, so we don't rotate like the Sheriff's Department does. They're permanently on nights, that's their thing, and this is a great attraction, and it will help tremendously with recruitment and retention.
And, and even if they want to work days, there's no way for them to work days until there's turnover, somebody leaves and they have sufficient seniority to make that move, so it just, you know, to me, with the exception of the Sheriff's Department, we're the only ones that work a scheduled night shift and yet they rotate, so those guys and gals get some time away from nights, it's not an easy endeavor.
It's not a set twenty people, it's not a set one person, it's whoever takes over those shifts, we've got a lot of vacation to cover, sick to cover, a lot of other people to cover. So I do believe the amount is going to be more than seventy thousand.
That, again, that's, that's two dollars an hour times twenty people times twelve hours a night and all that stuff, the people, while, while their vacation pay would be paid at the higher rate, the people replacing them would not be paid at the higher rate.
Okay, that's what I was.
Because again, we've got no way, that's what led to this whole discussion when we first started was, I proposed that only the people working that shift get, get the pay, so if Kevin's assigned that shift and Kevin takes PTO and I worked a shift for him, I would still get the pay, but I was told that our payroll system can't accommodate that kind of change back and forth, so that's my next best offer was to only give it to the employees assigned to that shift and any replacement employees for them would not get it, because they're not assigned, their home life's not affected and all those kinds of things. So that was, that was, to me, that was the next best option. The money probably goes the same either way, pretty close, the, the first way would be more expensive because the replacement person is being paid the higher rate and vacation PTO comes to a higher rate, so this from a financial perspective is probably a better alternative.
The day person doing, filling in for the night person's probably going to be getting overtime.
Right.
So that two dollars would be, tell them they can have two dollars an hour more, or they can have overtime.
Right.
Can't do this.
You can't.
Well, no, no, no. It would.
I know, but you guys, they're not worried about that two dollars at that point.
And again, part of the reason that we need this decision now is we're at the point where people got a plan for what, what their lives are going to be like in two thousand and eighteen and this is part of the decision-making process for them, at least for a small group of them, so we've got to be able to tell them what, what it's, what it's going to be in two thousand and eighteen.
All right, Sam, sounds like Chris was a no and I was a yes.
Well, I want to also say one more thing, this, the rate of pay, the rate of pay is so different from people that came from capital region that have been here a long time, that have enjoyed that three dollar increase, now another two dollar increase. We have rates all over the board, and if we don't put a cap on this at some point, because people have switched back and forth and they've changed their rates. I, I just want you to know, there's rates all over the place.
And I proposed a salary range for two thousand and eighteen and moving forward that we need to address at some point in time that does in fact have a cap on it.
And just because I feel like gardening today, we have rates all over the place throughout the county, because of the clerk's office, the collectors, prosecutors, our office, there's, it's all over the place.
We have titles, we all have different titles, they've got two titles.
Now we got even more titles.
I, I'm just saying, Jeff, paramedic, EMT, they have cabins, tenants.
Titles and stuff, and then it's brought up that, now they got titles and stuff.
You guys make the decisions, so. I'm just telling you, don't say, okay, how come this one's making ten dollars more than this one?
I usually don't.
Hopefully, when we see your budget for twenty eighteen, we're going to.
Yeah, I have, I've sent that in, one of the emails with my budget information was I proposed a salary range for every line in the department, and once they hit that high end they can't be given an increase unless you guys authorize it or move the entire scale, so that they then fall back within that scale. There is a top end that I proposed for eighteen.
Did you send me that?
I'm sorry?
Did you send me that?
Yes. I sent everybody, it's part of the, it was probably one of four or five attachments, so you may not, I can resend it.
Yeah, resend me that.
I would assume most of our higher paid are not working the evenings, I don't know.
That would be correct.
Doesn't matter when you get a three dollar bump and then you get another two dollar bump, and I mean, you know, you I mean, we're rewarding people that have accepted a job and now we're just going to give them more, I mean, hey, Christmas gift, let's just, let's just write checks.
It's a big deal to have to work nights.
To speak on that longevity piece, that dollar twenty-five difference, that's not a bump, they're being paid a dollar twenty-five less than starting wage in a twenty-four hour. So that two and three is replacing that dollar twenty-five, so granted seventy-five cents and and another dollar twenty-five to, or dollar seventy-five to equal out, but you're not adding on to that as much as what you're thinking, because they're still getting paid below that starting wage to what they would be for the twelve hour.
They're being paid well above most of the other people, most of those people getting that bump. The paramedics, the EMTs, they're getting a lot more than starting or even a mid-range. Most of them are on the higher end of the scale, and then you add another two dollars an hour to it, and you haven't said anything about a differential between an EMT and a paramedic, so you're going to give an EMT two dollars and a paramedic two dollars for the same night shift?
They're both, they're both working a night shift, that's, that's the philosophy. It doesn't matter if you're an EMT, a paramedic, or dispatcher, if you're forced to work a night shift, you're forced to work a night shift, and keep in mind, this isn't bump on a bump. The two and three dollars an hour, you're going to pay a dollar twenty-five of that no matter what. So the two and three dollars an hour was, was, was done to factor in some of the difference in the loss of overtime. So it's not three dollars an hour, it's actually a dollar seventy-five an hour that, that's for a paramedic, that's the difference in the pay adjustment of moving them, and I, I sent you some data a while ago that suggested to make them whole, to make their pay the same for moving from a twelve to, a twenty-four to a twelve, was actually closer to three dollars and four dollars an hour than it was two dollars and three dollars an hour. And again, I'm not going to argue the should have, could have, would have on the two and three dollars, to me, that ship has sailed, we have to do that to these people to keep their pay consistent with those that have already moved. What I'm here trying to do is, now that we've opened the floodgates and we've eliminated the twenty fours is to, to help create more consistent shifts and help us with recruiting and help us to be able to recruit against other places around here is to have this differential. Keep in mind, this is just for the night shift and only those people assigned to the night shift.
Yeah, and I'm banking on us saving a lot of money by not paying the overtime, so, I agree with Jeff.
We haven't even addressed the upper end of the salary, so you're going to have a lot of people that are way past the upper end.
And they just, they won't get an increase in eighteen, nineteen, twenty, however.
Yeah, they already got two and three dollars.
Yeah, so, so that's my point, is whether you adopt what I submitted, whether you adopt something different to that, whether you widen or narrow it at the bottom line is from the, from January one of eighteen moving forward, EMS will have a salary, salary wage range. And so no one will exceed the cap, so whatever we do now in, in the, in the course of that cap doesn't matter, because they will be above it, and if they're above it in nineteen then, and we give a cost of living and a merit increase, they won't get either one, because they're already above the cap. And I would, I would suggest that every classification in the county have a, a range and a cap. That, that helps eliminate some of the issues that are being addressed here with having wage ranges all over the map.
We need to vote, I'm going to know.
I make a motion that we increase the EMS night shift differential to two dollars per hour.
Second?
Let's do a roll call.
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
No.
Okay. Okay. Do we have anything else to come before us before we go into closed session?
Uh, we probably have some other things to. Just going to look for somebody for the planning commission for Dick Pearson's replacement. Think he's here till about April, so keep that in back of your mind, Chris. Do you get the emails about the oversight provision? I get emails and updates from them. Just want to add your own name to that, and then we can, did you get that, Jill?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you'll take care of sending your name and stuff to them?
Right.
Now I guess you got enough direction about the Amber update stuff.
Yeah, I just heard back yesterday, and so we have two days that you guys seem to be okay with. So I'm going to draft a letter, but then I'm also going to call the offices of the other taxi districts today because such short notice. Debbie, can you send me Perry's email? That'd be great, thanks.
I already done that, I wonder where we were at with that Russell stuff.
What, on the deputy or? Oh, on the.
No, Christie.
Christie, yeah.
Want that.
Yeah, yeah.
Recycle.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
What are we supposed to do, some of the HVAC controls for the jail in the previous sentence? Did y'all see that or something? C N C group? Can you mention something about last week or something with the software for controls? Did you see the email?
Yeah, I did.
So what were we supposed to do? Were we supposed to answer him or was it just got detached?
I get, I, there's, you know, we had, we said, we figured there ought to be some way you could override it, and when he says there's not, but.
Well, but they can, they can come down and keep it running.
Yes.
It's not like it's an emergency that we got to do it right now.
So basically, it was just an answer saying that, yeah, it does affect the whole thing, but it doesn't shut down if.
Right.
That's wrong, sorry, decided to delete that. And we got your letter from the thing you got after your meeting for the MSP stuff.
Okay.
I guess once they form that committee, we got to decide if we want all three of you on that or if we just want one of us.
I think we want all three of you on.
I think we want all three of you, but I did. Just because we can't make the meeting doesn't necessarily mean we're boycotting it, though.
No.
That's all I got. Do we have a closed session today?
Uh, personnel.
You guys got accounts payable out there?
Anything else?
Got that out. Make a motion to go into closed session.
I make a motion, we go into closed session pursuant to section 610-021 under revised statutes of Missouri, to go into closed session, discuss the following personnel issues, section 610-021-3. Roll call.
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Bob, did you have fun today?
Pardon?
Did you have?